All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
The owl.
This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local channel access eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. I guess, yeah. So it's not on our agenda, but we'll start the meeting with public information. Does the board have anything? Jerry?
Yeah, I wanted to, I know we saw a memo, I wanted to congratulate the rec department and all the departments of the town who participated in light up the night. I thought it went very well and a lot of people were there and was excellent. So congratulations to our staff.
It was lovely. Visitor Services Board also played a role in that.
Yes.
Ran in the gate and she was very proud. And I love tea time very much, but the new location was really quaint and lovely. Had amenities.
I remember how cold it was at tea time. We had that, we had the hot cocoa, you were on the hot cocoa duty, weren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me check my audio.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to stand.
The visitors do a little hot cocoa duty this year.
It's like Yankee Stadium.
More cookies, eat more cookies. Hold on, we're having some tough technical difficulties for those of you at home.
If you.
Have a terrible echo in here.
What if you just mute that audio?
I don't know where it's coming out of.
Oh.
If you mute.
Hit the TV.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Yeah.
How's that? Beautiful. Thank you, Jamie.
Wait, no, all the way down.
Oh. There we go.
Do, 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 test, test, test.
Somebody.
We have.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Rich. It doesn't look like we have anyone, any attendees. No one raising their hand. I don't see actually any attendees, so it's us. It's all us. All right, so we have Linda Saucy, the town clerk here to talk about vote by mail options. Welcome, Linda.
Linda, you have to turn that mic on because I turned it off. Well, thanks for all being here. And listening to this. So you started going over some of the numbers for vote by mail for town elections.
Could you move the mic closer to you, please?
Sure.
Thanks.
Is that better? Okay. So I started going over the numbers for vote by mail for town elections, having just been, having gone through four elections this year, all vote by mail. The least amount of vote, you know, ballots that we got back were the town election ones. People were somewhat interested in the primary in March. They were very interested in September and of course in November. November was huge, but the town election, it was, you know, pretty dismal. Had, we had 23% of the voters turn in their ballots. Even though we sent out the same number of ballots, we only got less than half of them back. And then the in-person voting was even worse. So, you know, I started going back and I went back to 2027 and then I hit 2022 and that number shocked me because it was only 9%. And I thought, well, wait a minute, in 2022, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. How come the numbers were so low? And then I had to look back at memos. The state had not elected to have, they actually, the state hadn't voted to put in place permanently vote by mail. So it wasn't even an option. You, you had to vote in person. So the vote in person in 2022 was 9%. But if you even jump back to 2020, when we were washing our groceries and our Amazon packages and you had to vote in person, the people that showed up to vote, 24%. So it all depended on what was on the ballot, time and time again. I went all the way back to 2012 and it was always, is there a contested race? Are you voting on something having to do with money, an override, a proposition two and a half, whatever? That's when people show up, if there's something that they care about. I went back to when we voted on tea time, people showed up for that. When we voted on the school, people showed up for that. So it really depended on that. This year, I mean, we have two select board races. We have two Eastham Elementary School races. We have NOSIT Regional School. And we have two library trustee. And that's it. Now, we may or may not have another, you know, question or, and that may bring people out, but that's really a what if. So it's all about whether we want to spend the money and we have to decide this soon. This is why I'm bringing it up now. If we want people to get mail-in ballots, we have to give them the option. And that means sending them a prepaid postcard to every registered voter in Eastham. That's 5,000 postcards. We, if we, and usually they're prepaid back, they don't have to be, but just out, that's, that's a $5,000 expense. If even half of them show, come back and say, yes, I want a ballot, that's another $2,500. And that's not counting the labor. We have to get people in here to stuff the envelopes, to get them together. We have to have two sets of ballots. So we have to have the early ballots and then we have to have the day of ballots and they're different, they're different colors, they're, they're scored differently, they come from the same printer, but they're different. So, you know, I was just trying to look at my budget because I, it's pretty, it's pretty used up for elections for 2024 slash 2025. And, you know, I thought, wow, if I can save $7,500, I'd like to do it and not spend it on this. We would still, you know, allow for absentee ballots because that's the law, you have to allow for that. And we would even offer, if you wanted, in-person early voting for the week before. We've never got a really huge response, although we did for November because a lot of people were fearing that they'd be waiting in line for, you know, an hour to vote. Never happened here, but they just wanted to vote early and make sure they got it over with. There was a lot of apprehension around voting in November as we all remember. So that's where I'm kind of like just looking, like to save a little money, bit of money. I talked to Rich on this one. He also brought up a, a point about, you know, if we had a question on the ballot and we sent out the ballots a month ahead of time without any prior information to the voters. So all they do is they get, they get a ballot and then you're getting a question on it. You haven't had town meeting yet, you haven't had any, any pre-town meeting meetings, there's been no information as to why we're spending money or not spending money. So they're like, they may have, they may already make up their mind before they ever go to, to cast that ballot. So that's a kind of a disadvantage to us, to the town. It's not giving people the full story, the full picture. So for transparency purposes, I think it's important for people to know if we're going to, you know, spend money, even if it's on a new fire truck or an ambulance or, you know, a police officer, we should give them reasons why we need to do this.
Yeah, I agree. I, I like that there's still absentee voting if people want it and that they can do in person or by mail, correct?
Yes, they can.
Yeah, so if someone knows they're going to be gone the week before.
Or the month before.
Yeah, they can come. But you will have the ballots, but again, that question, if there's a question, it wouldn't have been vetted at town meeting or
No.
Whether it's up or down or what the amount is or any of that, that wouldn't be known.
Absentee voting in the last couple of elections accounted for less than 1% of all ballots.
Jerry?
Absentee ballot is no question asked or you have to show proof?
No question asked.
No question asked.
Turn your microphone on.
Sorry, thank you. I think the early voting is the, is the one we really want to keep.
No.
No, that's the one.
That's the one she wants to get rid of.
But isn't it, didn't you say, but didn't you say that we would keep that, but we would get rid of the, the mail-in ballot except for absentee? So you could come in still a week or two ahead of time?
You could.
Okay.
We could have in-person early voting, but that would be the week before the election.
Yeah.
So with that, I mean, about 90% of the ballots, the early ballots that we did mail out were to people who live within five miles of the town hall. So, I mean, whether they could have gotten here to vote in person or not, it's, it's become more a convenience factor than anything else.
So are you, are you saying that you would keep the week before ability?
We could.
Okay. See, that's, that's what I would, I would think that's the one to retain.
Yeah, we could do that.
And I think that getting rid of the, the, the vote by mail, if it's a big expense with, with not a lot of, you know, turnout.
Yeah. Now, this is a select board decision or town council decision only for town elections.
I see.
Never applies to any state or, yeah, state elections.
Federal, yeah.
Yeah.
That's just my two cents. I, I think that it's a great idea, but I think you should have the early voting, you should keep that in place. That would be my two cents.
Yeah, I'm kind of torn on that because I think as long as you still have the absentee option, that people could come in. It's only if you get a lot of people that then it would, might become a problem if you weren't planning for it, I guess. So, I don't know, kind of turn on it. Jamie?
I mean, just, and correct me if I'm wrong, but really the only difference is like with absentee, you can come in the week before, go to the clerk's office, say you need an absentee ballot, vote, give it to you and you're done.
Yep.
Right?
Yep, that's the only thing.
That's the absentee process versus having a whole area dedicated strictly to early voting for a week.
Right. Yeah.
Is that what it was?
That's the only difference.
So the downstairs was, was sucked up by, by all that
You have
Activity as opposed to just having, you know, boxes outside that'll accept the ballots like a mailbox.
Right.
I see. Well, I could see both sides.
Yeah, I've done absentee voting before when I didn't think I'd be able to get in on that day and it was
Sure.
It's just as easy as early voting, it's just you go upstairs instead of downstairs and it's a little less formal.
And, you know, with the lack of meeting rooms, it becomes a problem even taking up an entire, even small meeting room, taking up that room for a whole day just for early voting. That's, you know, so we've been doing it upstairs in the town clerk's office anyway because we didn't have room to do it, but when it got busy in November, we had to move it down here and we had to move people out and they weren't too happy about it.
Jerry?
I agree with Jamie and I think the special is since there's no, no questions asked vis a vis absentee ballots, I would like an absentee ballot, I can come in and vote, hand it to you and it's done, it's, it's the same as, almost the same as early voting. So.
And we can put it out on the website that, you know, ballots are ready, come in, if you cannot make it on election day, vote absentee.
Yeah, and even just that, it might not hurt to just have a like little bullet list of like absentee voting is from when to when, where do you go and what do you need when you go there?
Yeah.
Just so people, I mean, it's, it seems simple, but you know, everybody's busy and everybody's doing a million other things and even though this is a primary thought in our minds, it isn't for other people. So maybe if we do change the process, it might be nice to just have a bullet list to have posted so people understand the change.
Yeah. We, we did get some questions the, during the last town meeting because we had the postcard that was sent out from the state and you had the option of selecting the ballot, the elections you wanted, or you could check all. If you checked all, you got the town ballot and all the other ones. And so we sent ballots out to all the people and some of them wrote back, why did, right on the ballot, why did you send me this? This is an uncontested election. Okay, thanks. You know, like, well, that's 97 cents down the drain.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm all, I'm, I think the absentee, for me, that seems like plenty.
Yeah.
The option, as long as they're clear as when, you know, you're open and how they can vote by absentee, whether it's by mail, right? Because they can request them by mail or they can come in as soon as the ballots are ready.
Sure.
So.
I'm good as long as they can, they can have a chance to vote ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion?
Do we need a vote?
Yeah, you just need a motion to opt out of vote by mail for the local election on, what is it, May 20th this year?
20th.
May 20th, 2025.
Yep. A second motion would be to vote in to in-person for the week before, so.
But if we didn't want to do that, does, we don't need any vote?
Vote it either way you want or, you know.
I would say my, my preference would be just to do away with the
Yeah.
Early mailing ballots. Vote by mail option.
Okay.
But that would still allow
Absentee.
Absentee, but what about early?
No.
No, we have to vote in early voting to invoke it.
You have to do two votes.
Two votes. We have to vote no mail-in voting and no early voting.
Yeah.
No, we don't have to vote no for the early voting.
Because
We would have to vote in the affirmative when
You have to vote, you have to opt out
Oh, we have to.
Early voting.
Okay, both, both of them.
Yeah, and then you have to either opt in or opt out of, of the
Mail-in.
No, the in-person early voting.
We already, they're two different things.
Then where do you do that?
Okay.
We did that once.
Well.
In-person early voting is not the same thing as absentee voting, even though it's, it's technically, you know, the physical acts are the same, it's not the same.
My question is, do we have to vote not to do in-person early voting?
Yes.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Because it's already offered?
It is the default option.
I see.
From the state.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. All right, you got that?
Yes. I make, I move that we opt out of in-person early voting for the town election on May 20th, 2025.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five to zero.
I'll also move that we opt out of mail-in voting for the town election on May 20th, 2025.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Thank you very much.
There you go. And just you may save a little extra money too this year because we won't have to rent chairs.
Right?
For town meeting. They said they're very close to getting their certificate of occupancy for the auditorium. It's all paperwork now. I know. Inside, you mean.
Don't need sunscreen or sunglasses.
Thank you, Linda.
So.
All right, licensing renewals. We have a block of six.
Yeah. Can I ask a question before we do any motion?
Certainly.
It seems that the applications for entertainment are for this time, but, and they have it much longer because they might have a wedding reception or something. Is that the normal course of what we do? I remember when we, when Brickhouse was here and he thought there might be a wedding reception, we advised him that he could apply for one day
Right.
License, so I'm just trying to understand exactly how, what we've done in the past and so forth on the entertainment.
I think usually they come in and they ask for what they want. Some of them will ask for all of their open hours because that's the easiest default kind of to do. And then we usually talk about it with them and negotiate down and you guys ultimately get to decide. I can pull the last couple that we've done.
No, it was, I'm not complaining on any of it because it makes, it seems to make sense the way they've written it up in, in the applications here, but it just seemed like we did it slightly differently. And I was just trying to understand exactly what the history is on how we deal with entertainment licenses, that's all.
I do know too, like, in a new situation, right, when a business hasn't traditionally had the entertainment license, we tend to approach it from a little bit more of a conservative standpoint and kind of step into that license to make sure, you know, we don't end up with complaints, things like that. And then with renewals where they're renewing under the same parameters as they've historically had and there have been no violations or complaints, we tend to honor that.
Thank you.
Well said, Jamie, thank you. All right. Do we have?
Makes sense.
I think we can do a, a motion on these six
Yeah, I think so.
As they appear in the
Yeah, as they appear in the packet.
I move that we approve the license renewals for the six organizations, Orleans Elk, 7-Eleven, Cumberland Farms, the Sharon and Four Points, and Holland One and Fairway as appear in the town in our packet.
Second.
All right, any discussion on any of these? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Five to zero. All right, I'm gonna let Jerry handle this next one, I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Got it.
I'm just gonna back up over here and eat my cookie.
Enjoy, thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Willie's World Wellness Conference Center, application for renewal of common vicular, all alcohol on premises, billiards license and a new application for entertainment. And I'll turn to, Jackie has something she wants to raise to us on this.
Yeah, basically, several inspectors have some outstanding issues, so I would request that you postpone the common vic, the all alcohol and don't entertain the new entertainment license until we've resolved those issues. And so it leaves billiards, but I would just put them all off till the next meeting.
Any questions or anything?
No, I think that's fair.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to postpone all licenses under Willie's World, including common vicular, all alcohol on premise, billiard and entertainment, postpone until February?
I don't know the exact date, so
We don't know yet. Okay, so just postpone, period.
Second, second. Any discussion? We'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None? Four, zero. Okay, turn it back to you, Amy.
That's a really good goodness.
That's why I brought him down here, so you guys would eat them all.
Apex.
Yeah. Environmental Partners Group is now Apex Corporation.
Okay.
Doesn't sound very partner-y, but I mean, it's okay.
All right. Administrative matters, we have NOSIT School District Agreement and Feasibility Study. I know Jerry has been working with Jackie closely on a lot of this.
So what you have in your packet unfortunately is the new proposed agreement as drafted by the schools with some of our reflections. And it looks like the, the school is looking for the board to appoint up to three people for a committee that's going to do all the sort of work session hash outs of these. I know it's a fantastic opportunity for any of you who are interested in the minutia of details. So in Brewster, they did, they appointed Peter Lombardi, they're the only ones that have appointed so far, they did Peter Lombardi and a member of the select board and then some other resident. But, you know, I know Jerry and I are, are game for this.
Yeah, and I have not heard back. I did, on looking at this, Peter Wade, who's on the finance, the co-chair of the finance committee, has been very interested in
Yes.
Following the schools and I, he and I have not connected yet, but I would think that I'd like to hold a slot for, potentially for him, if he's willing to do it, I would like to think that we could appoint him as the third.
It's a great idea. They've been on top of this since the inception, so it makes sense to have somebody.
Makes sense, yeah, it does.
Do, do you have any comments on it, Jackie? On the, I've half listened to Peter's and
I kind of don't think it's worth commenting on at this point because there are so many changes that it's virtually a new agreement. I mean, it should be a new agreement, but it, it really truly is. And so we really haven't, what I've given you is what we are working on now, but.
An updated timeline on this?
It's going to be a full calendar year probably from January because it'll, or more, is it'll have to, the working group will meet, then the next step is the school commit, I believe the school committee signs off, then it goes to DESI, the Department of Education. And then it comes back to us. And then if DESI approves all the changes, it goes to the four town meetings.
Question. What's triggering this, all this editing? Was this always a draft to begin with?
No, we've had an agreement for the past, I don't know, 40 years and we have not opened it up, we haven't touched it, right? So the impetus for this came a couple of years ago, that four town managers asked the school committee to consider allowing a rolling average of enrollments so that we wouldn't have these spikes and dips in, in our budgets, basically to, to sort of try and give us a little bit of a
Smooth it.
Yeah, a warning and a warning if something big was happening, so
Helps with planning.
It does. So that's why we opened it. And then once it's opened, the first thing that the school's attorney did is say, well, you should make sure that everything in here is still legal under DESI standards. So she made a lot of changes and then, you know, we have several, Jerry went through it, I went through it, Brewster has sort of led the charge. So then we had to take all of those documents and sort of merge them into one copy that everyone can kind of read. And so you can't really see who's making which changes, although you can see the school changes are in red and I think the town changes are in blue, but we've kind of merged our town position into one. So.
That makes sense. I mean, you mentioned the, the year was put in, but I missed it. What, when, how old is the document in its current state?
62?
1960 something.
I get it.
Really old.
So also
Old as I am.
60 years.
Right up, they mentioned some, some dates, you know, due dates, delivery dates with certain
They do, and I can get you the revised schedule. I think the first thing is they gave us 30 days to look at it and we said, oh no, we need like three months, we need three months to look at it. So that was the first scheduling, so we caused the first delay, but it just wasn't something that any of us could, could do in that amount of time, so. But I'll get you a revised schedule.
I was just curious if this
It won't be this town meeting, it would be next town meeting.
Okay, okay.
There's no way we can get it.
Right, well, it's coming up quickly. Okay, is there any, was, was this a way that we were going to try to get the budget information from the school a little bit earlier, ahead of time?
Yeah, so the, one of the primary things, changes that we're recommending is just that we have deadlines for the Yeah, so the, one of the primary things, changes that we're recommending is just that we have deadlines for those budget things. So that, like we do in our charter, that, that tell us that we have to send certain information out to you at certain times. So yeah, that's one of them.
There is some forecasting.
Yes, asking for long-term planning, some forecasting, especially on capital.
This is a question, not a suggestion. Does it make sense to try to go ahead with some revisions to this that get us that, that information sooner than later, rather than, and then stay that the, the document is still open for editing for the following year?
I think yes and no. Like the school has been open to the criticism that we laid at their feet, I think, last year and the year before, and they already, we already have some numbers. We already have, we're looking forward to seeing their preliminary budget documents. We already have the elementary schools draft. So it, it looks like they are trying to meet those new deadlines now, which is awesome.
There's a meeting tomorrow at five here where the schools are presenting to the Eastham School Committee, the elementary school budget.
And that's the first time that they will have talked about that.
Right, and we, and I would, would say that's new.
That's way earlier.
Much earlier than we've ever had before, which is a plus.
Got it.
At least they listen.
So you don't think this, that would be necessary to lever that sooner than later because it's happening by natural law?
Yes, and we can't, we, I mean, we can't change it. We can't demand that they do it. But what's nice, what's pleasant is that we are collaborating on it and they are doing it for us.
So, so we're.
So do we, I guess we could appoint. Appoint and that was for two and then we'll hold the other.
Yeah, we'll hold the other one.
Until Peter.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Jerry and Jackie to the, I guess, School District Feasibility Study?
Yeah, no, the School District Agreement Committee.
School District Agreement Committee.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
And we can, we can appoint a third person later as needed. And did you get the three months to review it?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And so then the second item is the feasibility study. We, we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state of Massachusetts for a regionalization and efficiency grant. This, we applied with the towns of Brewster, applied for Brewster, Orleans and Eastham. Wellfleet opted out of this study, but we're going to include their stats in anyway. But we're looking at all, all, we're looking at everything, enrollment, capital planning, age of buildings, you know, trends, new, anything that we can try, anything new and different. So we're just gonna be looking comprehensively at that.
Will that cover the whole cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And it will probably take at least six months to a year, I would think, to do that. So that's that.
Ahead here, yeah, to Rock Harbor South Dock update.
That's me. You have a memo in the packet from Shayna, Projects and Procurement Director. And basically, we met with the Capital Projects Committee. We gave them all of the options on Rock Harbor and what could be done to fix that south dock. So that's where, where we have twelve slips. And FOTH Engineering has been working on it for, for a while. So we were under contract with them to work on it and they gave us on the backside the prices for the different options. So we came down to basically three options and the Capital Projects Committee agreed with our recommendation to halt the project and reappropriate that funding, which looks like will be roughly seven hundred, a little over seven hundred thousand dollars to maybe our other landings or infrastructure projects that are on the waterways.
I, I'm into it. I, the dock is usable. And we have other landings in town that could definitely use attention.
Yes.
And it's one of those things where we have to make financial decisions and we can't have it all, even though I want it all, all of the time. And I feel like this is one of those subtle decisions that we make that saves people money, like, in that we don't come back and ask for more money to do, to do something else. Yeah.
I jump in because I, I was on the harbor planning committee. So this is close to me. I agree with the recommendation, given the other projects and, and expenses on the horizon. But you know, there's really only four landings that we, that we look at in town, right? Rock Harbor, Hemingway, Salt Pond and Collins Landing. And Collins Landing, we talked with Woods Hole, Woods Hole told us that's the only one that's really on fire. That one has to be fixed or else it's gonna go away. So I don't, I don't know how, how to measure it other than the ex, what the experts told us about three or four years ago. So we need to keep our eye on that. The other thing that I think that the report really emphasized, and I'd love to, for us to be able to revisit this someday, is that we have about eighty percent of the, of the cove, the western side of the cove is in Eastham. Yet other than Collins Landing, we have no recreational access to that body of water. And that is a huge asset for a coastal community like Eastham.
There's Hemingway.
But Hemingway is, is, Hemingway is, you can get a, you can get a kayak in there, but you can't, you can't get a, anything larger than a, like a flat bottom skit, skiff or a Carolina skiff or a flat bottom boat. So what we wanted to do was see if we could expl, what was the recommendation? And Woods Hole people were understanding of it too, that we would like to see some improvement on Collins where there's enough depth to get a big boat in there, a boat like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty feet. But there's no ramp there that, and it's mostly used by the commercial fishermen and they need a place. They need to do it. So I don't want to lose sight of that, even though I agree with the recommendation of the committee. I'd like to somehow at some point.
I think the ramp, even though it's not technically in Eastham, the ramp at Goose Hummock is a state ramp.
That one's also pretty impossible to use. It's very difficult. I mean, you probably abused it.
We use the yacht club.
So do we.
Yeah.
But again, you know, it, it's an asset. This is a coastal community. I mean, and we have this asset that we, and in fact, one of the big problems that we saw in the, in the investigation of this whole thing was there weren't enough slips in Rock Harbor, even after the, you know, the expansion. So people wanted a place to put their boat in and we don't have it. So I just think we're missing an opportunity here. And it's money and I don't think it's something we would want to be looking at while we're staring down the barrel of wastewater. But I do think we need to keep that in mind and circle back to it.
Yeah, I, I disagree with you a little bit on the, on the town cove and, you know, estuary. The amount of boats that are in there in the summer is mind numbing. How many? I've counted from, sometimes from the, the inlet to Nauset Heights and Orleans, that mile, mile and a quarter of spit, over a hundred boats beached on one day.
How many of them are Eastham residents?
That, that doesn't matter. Well, but how many more people do you want out there? I mean, it gets dangerous. There's people flying through those channels in the back there with, you know, little kids sitting on the bow of their boat. And there's a lot of people using that now. And I don't, I don't think adding more people, even if there are people, is wise to, to put as many people in there as we can.
I think we should be able to make use of the asset. To me, that's like saying we've got too many cars on the road, so Eastham you can't drive. I mean, I just don't.
No, it's like curb cuts is how I think of it.
Go ahead.
Don't put more curb cuts in the, into that system. I mean, there are many places in Orleans you can launch a boat. It's, it's not that far away. It doesn't have to be in Eastham.
Well, you, for example, you know, I, I, I use the yacht club because I'm a member. But, you know, you can't put a boat in there after June fifteenth. It's in the, in the, in the yacht club, um, just by parking in that lot. It's, it's not available to anyone except people with an Orleans sticker.
True. You can put a boat in. You just can't leave your trailer there.
Can't leave your trailer there. I've talked to the harbor master about it. He said you'd have to bring it up with the select board. So I mean, all I'm saying is I just think we're, we're, we're closing off an asset to the count of the town for our residents. And I'd like to see it open. I'd like to see us facilitate creation of more opportunities to use that asset that we own.
Well, I think that that's definitely a part of the plan. And it certainly supported in the harbor plan and the strategic plan and all of the landings are on the capital plan. We just need more funding for them, it looks like, than we have. But, you know, we're trying to improve them. I think, I get what you're saying, Bob. I mean, we have, just like we have very little parking anywhere. We have very little, very few ways to water. And it would be nice if we, you know, obviously if there was a property that came up for sale, it was somewhere where we could get away to water, we would probably, you know, try and acquire that.
But that, that's actually happening now. The, the house that's, if you look, if you drive, driving towards the rotary, the, on the left, towards the cove, the very last driveway before the landing opening, that house, as I understand it, is, is, is up for sale or, or has just recently changed hands. I was working with Jared Collins before he passed on trying to talk to some of the neighbors in that area to see if they would be willing to use that property for an expansion for Eastham residents to make use of the cove. And things fell apart with Jared with a while back. But I think, and I'm not saying that we should have bought that. But I think we've, I think that, that's water over the dam. I think somebody else already bought it. And they're, they're talking about, you know, what they could do to develop it. So to me, it's, it's, it's a pet peeve. It's a thing I'd like to see done.
I definitely think they should be.
I don't think it's a priority monet, money wise. I certainly don't, given where we are today, but I'd love to see that, make use of that asset.
Is there a remaining budget?
Yeah, it's seven. Seven hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Which would be reallocated to the improvements that were needed.
Well, I think.
It says the remaining balance for Rock Harbor is that seven.
Twenty-two.
Is money that we would, we have.
It is money that is available to reallocate, but it is allocated for Rock Harbor. So depending on what we want to reallocate it to, we may have to go back to town meeting or not, depending on whether it fits the.
No, we do. It is a town meeting vote to reallocate it. It allows us to reallocate it, reappropriate it for a like purpose, which is defined as the same amount of term for the bond, a project that meets the same, which any of the landings would be. But town meeting still needs to do it because it was voted for Rock Harbor. So if we wanted to use it at Collins or anyplace else, we'd need another town meeting vote to say, and instead of raising taxes to fund the new appropriation, we just transfer it.
And we may be able, we may be talking about that and recommending it this year. I mean, we, we have several projects in the ball, art, that are sort of balls in the air that we're getting various prices on that are coming in higher than we have money for.
For people watching at home who maybe might not look at the packet, you have option one and option two. And would that require, both of those options for doing something about the docks at Rock Harbor?
So they wouldn't require any more vote by us, they would, but.
No, and it would take up the rest of that.
Money. Yes.
The rest of that money. Yeah, I mean, I already said that I think that it's in, we invested a lot of money in Rock Harbor and we have other landings that could use some attention.
And we still will continue to. We'll have to replace those docks again. We'll have to dredge again. Yeah, we just spent extra money dredging, so.
And again, I'm, I'm for deferring what we can right now. And I'm happy that you're thinking about, you know, around, coming around at some point. This is gonna come back to us. That's all I'm asking.
Yep.
We don't lose sight of it.
Absolutely. I agree.
Yeah, because I think stormwater at both of those sites are an issue at Collins Landing and Salt Pond. And so some of it isn't just the recreational access for people. It's for part of our water quality environment.
And that's where we got the grant funding from the USDA for all three of those landings.
And we knew we would never dredge Hemingway. It's just not gonna happen.
Right.
So it leaves Collins to get into the cove or an expansion of Collins or something else.
You can't dredge there either. It's a long story.
But Collins, Collins can, you can actually get the boat in.
But getting it off the highway.
Oh, it's terrible.
Yes, it is.
I don't even like to drive car in there.
Me neither.
Or out of there. It's a, it's a right turn, right turn situation. Go around the rotary and turn right to go down in there.
That's why we're so, I was so interested in that other property.
Yeah, that's owned by a gentleman across the street. Owns the adjacent lot. And then, then like you said, there's a house beyond that that has another. So there's.
And there's some parkland in there too. There's a sliver of.
Really?
I think so.
No, it's Hemingway.
Yeah, there, there had been an expansion. It would, it would be expensive. There'd have to be an expansion in the parking lot, a change to the routing, how people get in and out of that thing. If it was so easy, it would have been done already. I'm just saying, I'd like, I'd like us to be able to use that asset. I wouldn't know where else to put in. I mean, I do the same thing you do, Amy.
Yeah, I know a lot of people that put in at Goose Hummock. Barely good sized boats. And that's not a huge lot. They park across the street at Stop and Shop. There's, you know, miles of empty parking in that.
Right, no, I've.
Kind of the back half.
I've seen that as well.
Yeah.
I, maybe I've tried to go in at the wrong time, you know, could be.
Yeah, you know, Fourth of July weekend, busy weekends. It's bumper to bumper.
Title wise, I meant, I mean, because you, there's a, there's a, there's a, like a berm in there that you have to get, get over.
Goose Hummock?
Yeah.
All right. We're ready to move on? Okay, department fee increases.
So we have one that's in the packet and as, just for Bob's, I don't know if you remember last year, but this is an annual thing we do. We look at our fees. The department heads make recommendations. Basically, this is the meeting where I sort of run it by you and see if you're interested in it. If you are, then we will tighten up the recommendations and we'll do a public hearing in probably sometime in February to decide on the actual fees and, you know, hear the public if they have any comments. So we have proposed fees from Paul Lag in Community Development, just a couple of new ones. And then raising the butter legal notice mailing because it is, we're, we're losing money on that, on that. And we want it to at least cover its costs. So that's Paul's. And then I didn't want, I wanted, we didn't receive this in the packet in time. But when we had discussed all the short-term rental fees last year, the reg, short-term rental registration fees last year, we set a separate, we did not set or increase the fees for a seasonal rental or a hotel motel inn and campground. And so those have remained the same. And so we're gonna be recommending that you make the seasonal rental and the hotel motel inn and campground all three fifty.
And what was it?
Hotel motel inn and campground, I think was two fifty and the seasonal rental has been at a hundred because we've been treating it like a year round rental, but it's really not, right? So.
What defines seasonal rental?
Seasonal is more.
Short term.
More than thirty days.
It's, it's thirty-one days or more.
But not more than six months or?
Well, not, it's not twelve months.
Okay.
So any, in, any period in between there is seasonal.
So people who do winter rentals.
Winter rentals or.
Or if you rent for a month.
Or summer rentals.
Right.
And we used to have a lot of summer rentals on Cape Cod where, you know, And we used to have a lot of summer rentals on Cape Cod where, you know, you may, it would be like Labor Day to. I mean, I'm sorry, Memorial Day to Labor Day. That's kind of fallen through the wayside um with the the shorter term stays, but. Um so I'm, so I'll include those. If we go to public hearing, I'll include those in the public hearing packet.
Are you just one comment?
Yeah.
Um the postal service will raise rates in January, raise rates in July and so forth. It just seems like and it's under, going to be under a lot of pressure next year as well. Uh it seems like nine dollars is
Should we just make it?
Too small for 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 fiscal year twenty twenty-six, because I think you're looking at the potential of two postage increases within that year. So I would my thoughts, go to ten dollars per butter on on the legal notice. Um that way, for sure, with a postage increase, we're not going to be losing money on each one. But that's if you, they come back with nine, that's fine. I'll vote for it. But my suggestion is think about, because postage rates go up every year to go higher than nine, because you're you're looking at only, what are you looking at? Uh twenty-eight cents.
Right. Increase.
The difference from where you are. So any postage increase is going to eat that up on certified mail. That's all. I think ten would be a better shot.
Okay.
I was kind of thinking that too, Jerry.
Can mention the uh the water fees.
Oh.
Um. We haven't, we have to pull this together, but we had talked last time you convened as a Board of Water Commissioners. Um we had a pretty good rate increase. And um I think we'll be okay with that rate increase for the budget, but it won't be covering the new operating costs with a new operating contract and won't be contributing to capital as much as we had hoped. That being said, one of the other things we discussed was instituting a connection fee for people that have been able to connect but haven't. And so um that might be a fee that we'll bring up to you. Uh we just have to flush that out.
Yeah, I.
I mean, up until now, we've incentivized connecting, but now we're ten, literally ten years in.
Yeah, I think the way we did it with the meters, you had a certain period of time that you could still connect. So maybe we say after, even if it's ten years, like the first people, if they haven't connected now ten years, now they have to, there'll be some sort of fee. And you make it ten years. That way in ten years, we'll have everybody.
I think the big issue really ultimately is going to be if we have the system built out and half the people are connected. But we're paying a hundred percent of the operating costs. It's on the backs of the half that are connected and not on the other half. Even though they all contributing for the infrastructure itself on the tax rate, the operating costs is being born and that becomes tough. So.
Well, we could also add in, we talked about, uh, you know, when a house sells demand, you know, they have to hook up to town water and things like that, like triggers that or.
I'll check that out.
I don't know. I guess you can't really do like well failure, but you could do.
Well, I think we can do well failure.
Yeah.
Just that they can't just put a new pump in. They have to connect then. That's what I'm, yeah.
How would you regulate that, though?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
If your pump fails.
Well, everything goes through the Board of Health.
Yeah.
The op- all the operators have to get permits.
But I definitely think like when a house transfers ownership, they should have, they should connect. I think that would be one way to grab. Ever loved the uh, you know, the people that haven't.
Uh can I ask an unrelated question? Where?
Is it related to fees?
It is related to fees. I went on the website and I tried to find the dump fees and where I could find that information. And it was not on the transfer station website, because I had something I wanted to get rid of. And I was like, I wonder how much it costs to get rid of. And I know we voted on new fees and um I couldn't find it. And I was like, oh, that's awkward.
We'll get it up there.
That'd be really great. And.
It used to be up there because I.
I know.
I've sent the people the link before, but it's been a while.
Where did you find that?
I Googled Eastham transfer station fees. Yes, but it should be.
I went to the transfer station page.
See, I don't do that. I never try to.
And then I tried to search within our website, which I also was like, maybe this will work. And it didn't. And then I did five minutes and.
Doctor Google.
Yeah.
Yes, that should be prominent on.
But maybe make it more easier to find when you do it that way. Yes, the Google. It is. I mean, I've, I we, the minutes in the packets are, I mean, there are some things that are.
It's a lot to.
But.
Juggle.
The Google.
Just Google.
All right, love it. All right. Anything else on fees?
So we'll be back. We'll revisit.
Got it.
Um.
MMA.
Kayla wanted me to just check in to make sure everyone still wants to go to the MMA. And if you want to do like the WeMo lunch or you have to let us know.
Yes, I think we said yes and yes.
Luncheon, Amy? Yes, I'd love to.
So we have three WeMos.
Three WeMos, women elected municipal officials, sorry.
I'll discriminate it again.
Yes. Although KP Law has been a sponsor for years and they art went on here.
That's all right.
Yeah.
I won't, I won't forget.
You can go if you want to, but they usually sell out.
It.
So then some women might be.
The first year I went.
Yeah, that's, listen, I, let's not do.
I have to tell you, in two thousand nine was my first MMA conference. It was a room about the size of this. There were maybe.
Oh, wow, really?
Yeah, five or six tables. And that was it. And now.
Now you're in the big ballroom.
You went last year.
I did.
Go last year. I went a couple of years ago with John Normus. Huge. One of the huge banquet halls.
Yeah.
All the way front to back.
It's just in the Omni?
No, well, I was in the Heinz Convention Center.
We've never been in the Omni before.
This is gonna be, yeah, this is a new location. Seaport. Seaport Convention Center, yeah.
I don't love that though, because I don't, you know.
I don't have all my normal thing. I know.
The Italy and Jasper's.
Problem.
And bowling.
The history of the Seaport.
Yeah.
Already developed.
Yeah, well, you know.
But we'll try.
These five years.
Try it. See how it goes.
I'll give feedback. I'll let them know about my. The irony. Issue.
Maybe we can have a bus to Italy.
I, oh. Uber, an Uber van.
Do, yeah, let's do like a party bus to Italy.
We bring a funk bus.
I would chip in for that.
Sure.
I would.
All right.
All right.
Town managers, and that's Thursday. They're having some things on Thursday now, I saw, I think, at at MMA.
Really?
Yeah, Thursday evening.
Look, okay.
Yeah.
That's asking a lot.
That is. Um I don't have anything. Jerry did the thank yous um for the holiday event on the green.
Think.
Transfer station schedule closed for Christmas, of course, open Friday, twelve twenty-seven and Saturday and Sunday. So we're closed Thursday, the day after Christmas.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday and open Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So that's pretty good for the post-Christmas.
Right.
Yeah, and that's.
I think opening that Friday is.
And then just closed for New Year's um and that Thursday following, they take that as the holiday and then it's open Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good schedule for the transfer station. Um and I don't think.
You've Jackie O'Rourke has joined.
Yes, we have a new.
And I saw that.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Seems lovely.
She just started and she's doing great. We haven't scared her away yet, so.
No doubts there.
Yes, one, because our, we have a select board meeting scheduled for Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
Okay.
So the January dates, we did choose the January dates.
Yeah.
They are the sixth and the thirteenth.
Oh, what are we doing?
Yes.
Sixth and thirteenth?
Sixth and thirteenth. It's on the.
But the February dates are equally problematic. So we want to look at February. Um it would be February. It's one twenty-five. Why am I doing this? Fifth.
Let me get my crumbs up here.
I can't get my calendar to settle down. It's rolling.
There was.
It said January sixth and the. And the thirteenth. It's on the back of the agenda.
Yeah.
Jerry didn't get it back.
And then look at the February dates.
So wait, what's wrong with the sixth, the sixth and the?
Sixth and the thirteenth for January.
What do we have?
No, I don't think there's anything wrong with those.
Right. No, that's fine. Those are, those are our dates.
So we're doing back to back weeks?
Yep.
We are, um just because of the holiday. And then um in February, we have an issue two. It should be, am I looking at the third? The third or the fifth?
The third, the third and.
The third and the seventeenth is a holiday. So we're gonna have to either do the third and the tenth or the third and the twenty-fourth.
Um what's better vis a vis?
Or the eighteenth?
Budget finding.
I think the budget finance thing, it would probably be better on the twenty-fourth.
Because that's after CPA two usually has their.
So I'd do the third and the twenty-fourth if we could do that.
And that's going to be different than the the schedule that you sent us.
Yeah.
Yes.
You said the third and the twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth.
It's it's changing those last.
The holidays seem to be on the third week.
Right.
Third week, yeah. Two holidays.
I had a couple of things wrong with minutes.
Oh, yes, and Kayla wanted to do minutes. And to change the date on my.
All right, did anybody have anything under new and upcoming follow up agenda items?
A question for Jackie on the grant, the hundred thirty-four thousand dollar grant for uh body cameras. Is that the full purchase price?
I believe it's three year, three year program. Yep.
Program.
And it covers the full cost.
Mm-hmm.
It covers the, like the.
Doesn't cover the review.
It's a lease and I think it's five years, so it's a five year program.
Okay. So it covers three of the five.
Gives us time to just get it in the budget and.
Body. Well, once we have the equipment.
Oh, right.
Well, it's.
But it's gonna be an annual cost.
The days of buying things and owning them is kind of over, so it's a lease. So you're usually, the same thing we do with like tasers and other equipment and now new phone systems. Wow, you're not buying phones. We used to have to spend hundreds of thousands on phones. Now you don't buy phones, but you pay a monthly or a phone cost per month. And so same thing on the, the body cameras, you know. They become obsolescence, obsolescence, a new lease, you get new body cams.
But the town owns all the footage from them, not the lease.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, we've footage, yeah.
Also Stephanie.
Important.
Yeah.
Stephanie's, Stephanie's promotion too.
What's that?
Stephanie Sykes.
Yes.
Was promoted as well. And I was happy to see that.
She was. We we worked it out. And um we've backfilled that assistant position as well. He's going to be joining us sometime after the holiday. We're not, I'm not sure the date, but sometime in early January. And he was an intern in the department.
Oh, great.
Either last year or the year before.
Will she still be doing animal control, all those other things?
Yeah, that was the, um she wanted to to do animal control. So that was how we had to, we worked it out.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah.
She's very, very good at animal control. She's very good as a shellfish constable. She's just very good.
Amy? Um I know we have RTE talks in January, right? Yeah, I think we're gonna do it right away on the.
The January.
January sixth. January sixth. And I just wanted to make sure Kayla emails, because remember we had had that email list, so.
And that's our residential tax exemption conversation. So if anyone in residents are watching this and you have an opinion on the matter, please join us.
Send us your.
Email us, please. That would be really great. Super helpful in our decision making process. And we look forward to hearing from the part-time residents.
Thank you.
Um, all right, minutes. Monday, November eighteenth, I have just one little thing, a correction. Under where it says climate action committee update.
Mm-hmm.
The last sentence, she talks about the charter. It's the charge. She fixed it in the next line.
Charging that charter.
Yeah, it's charge and not charter. Um but that's all I had in that one. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of Janu- or November eighteenth, I believe it was.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November eighteenth with Amy's adjustment.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. And then on the next one, our last meeting, December second, Kayla made the same mistake I did. Calling the residential tax assistance, the residential tax exemption.
Okay, tax assistance.
She, yeah, she mentions it a couple in the heading and uh yeah, three times, actually. She did it. So with that change, I'll need a motion.
I move we approve the minutes of December second, twenty twenty-four as amended, mentioned as you said.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five to zero. Any other business? Oh, I do have one quick thing. I went with Chief Bohannon and a few members of the CERT team to uh check out the high school and look at the shelter situation. The gymnasium's now, you know, open. The cafeteria is open. So we looked at, you know, where to let people in for shelter options. You know, heaven forbid, we have a big storm uh this winter and uh I need to put people, you know, get people safe and and put up there. So we have a, you know, a loose plan. We can get people in and figure out what to do with them once we got them there. So.
And the animal, they're doing.
Yeah, that's, I don't know. I I don't know if the local dog owners are still going to participate in that.
They did that. They really handled that.
And Stephanie was there, um but we really need to put her in charge with someone from the dog owners, I think, to because I know they they even have crates and, or we have crates in the in the storage container.
Yeah, because people are going to show up with.
Right. People are going to show up with pets if it's, you know, if it's bad enough. And uh I know Stephanie's all over it to to make sure it's run safely and and there's definitely room in the high school. There's classrooms we can take. There's all sorts of stuff that.
Yeah.
You know, they have separate entrances.
A nice operation the last time we did it. It really was.
Yeah.
Speaking of the high school, I went and I did a tour of the auditorium.
Oh, you did?
I did. It's very fancy.
And it's just about ready. They said just paperwork.
It's just about ready. And I went with Chris Blood, who maybe sometimes, yeah. Um actually, I saw him at the late the night and he told me about it. And then I was like, hey, and I invited myself um and looked at the equipment that they have installed and um it and asked Mr. Ferris a number of questions of like, hey, so how is this going to be available to the community? And I think that is to be determined and.
Yeah, I did talk to uh Moira Carey is on the uh regional school committee. She was, and she's part of our CERT team. So I talked to her about, you know, town meeting, being there. And she says, oh, they're discussing right now some of the policies for using that. And I said, make sure that that's always blocked out for us because you know, the way things are set up now, we can, that will be the place because even if we have overflow, it's all connected.
Right. And the capacity is like over seven.
It's over seven hundred just in that. But then if you add the cafeteria and the gym to simulcast into
Right.
which it's all wired for.
And I think.
More than.
Town staff would probably be capable of doing that with the equipment that they have. It's not all the way set up to do that, but they have the equipment to do it. And, you know, I asked him a little bit about, do you have people to run some of this equipment? And the answer was not exactly. And I think there is a hope for a video department at some point.
Did you ask about having it wired into the feed for the, like the either channel, whatever the.
Access. Access.
I don't know what the numbers are now for the, the school channels.
Does the school have a channel?
Yeah.
School has its own channel.
They have their own channel.
Its own channel, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, it's the education channel.
Right.
Who runs it?
Well.
I don't know.
Was it Katie McCully? She was the teacher.
I don't think she's there anymore, is she?
She's retired, I saw her retiring, yeah.
Oh, well, so it seems like there could be some more follow up with optimizing some of the equipment that they have there.
Let's get it built first.
Let's, yeah.
We've got to finish construction.
Yep.
When was the tour?
Create a whole new department.
When did they, uh, when did you guys go to see this?
I, that wasn't recent that I saw the auditorium, she saw it.
Oh, I, they, they were having a training, they were having a training on the equipment, because they had finished installing the audio and the the audio and the video and the lights and they have an opening concert on Thursday. And so I think Mr. Ferris was in contact with Chris Blood and I just happened to see Chris Blood and also wanted to see all the equipment, and so I just got a tour of just the auditorium.
For the words, Suzanne.
I get it, all right. I didn't miss the.
Well, I was, yeah, I was like, how many other people can I invite to this? And then I was like, no, I'll just go look at it and then we'll see, and then I'll tell everyone about it and then see if there should be another follow up.
You know, we could probably get Peter to get a tour during school vacation week or something.
They're, they're off two weeks.
Right. Maybe.
It was, yeah, I mean. I got lost trying to go in there, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, our way.
Okay, no, but like even like just coming in the door and going all the way. Yeah.
All right.
But I would like, you know, the idea was to have the community also be able to use that auditorium in some way. And so I'm interested in how we can help facilitate that along.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think that's a good.
Was the intention the whole time.
Right, and I think the school committee is, Moira said they were talking about that, about use for not just the school, but others.
Who's the liaison to the school committee? Who's the liaison to the school committee?
I think I am.
I was like, this is going to be really embarrassing if it's me. I thought Moira didn't.
Careful what you ask.
She's up next year.
Yeah, she's up here.
She hasn't decided yet.
She's still at school.
Yeah, she might.
Okay.
But yeah, I think they're discussing it now.
Maybe I'll track her down.
Yeah, so the next meeting, I'm sure they're going to be discussing some of that stuff, especially with it, it's opening imminent. But Kayla's been, I know, trying to book town meeting and they won't do it yet, because they didn't have their certificate.
They don't have a certificate of occupancy.
Can't do it yet, so they, they wouldn't.
Who grants it?
Building.
Building, we do.
Building inspector.
Yeah. Okay.
Get there. All right, Jerry?
I move we adjourn.
It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.